Yeah, they already are the South, South CIF Champions. We there? Yeah. All right. Mayor Chris Duncan, I'm going to convene our adjourned regular meeting agenda for the City of San Clemente for Tuesday, February 28th, 2023, discussing our long-term financial plan, pledge of allegiance. Jake, can you step to the podium and lead us in the pledge, since you're the VIP today? Please place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jake. Okay, Laura, oral communications?
We have one speaker, Donna Vedrine.
I don't have prepared comments tonight, but my heart is heavy and I'm very concerned about the unsheltered on our streets and in our public spaces in San Clemente. And this is a call to action. Let's rally the troops. Let's listen to our police services who are asking for shelter beds in San Clemente while we work on a regional approach. I don't want to see what happened last night where a citizen of San Clemente called me and said, there is a homeless person here who was wet and shivering. I can't leave him alone. What do I do? We, she called, she called police services to do a welfare check. During that time, this homeless person had difficulty breathing. She called ambulance services who came. His O2 sats were low. He was dying in front of her. And if she hadn't stayed there with him, I offered to go over and stay there with her and him until police services came, until the ambulance came. We can do better as a city. We don't want this happening tonight. And the answer is, we need to open an weather-activated emergency shelter. If nothing else, it's the right thing to do. It's the most cost-effective thing to do. We don't want our police coming and having to do a welfare check. We can save that money on an ambulance coming, on paramedics providing emergency life-saving care, transferring that patient to the hospital. And that's just a temporary fix for someone who is exposed to the elements and dying on our streets. It was two blocks from the community center, two blocks from the senior center. It would be more cost-effective and the right thing to do to open up a shelter and to just provide a place for people to sleep, even it's from, even if it's from like 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning. Partner with the church leaders. Partner with nonprofits. Let's take action. Let's stop talking and let's do the right thing. Thank you.
And I did, I apologize. I did receive one more card. Brad Malamud.
Chris, it was good to see you're running for office again. Good luck on the assembly run. Moving on to the budget, I'm going to try to do all those things. I sent the council. I didn't know the, how to get to the city manager. Maybe one of you can send what I sent to you to him. Some notes and discussions that I think you should do, but I do think for the public, you posted the hundred and something pages three days before the council meeting. Financials, I guess, should always be sent, given at least 14 days to the public to review. You claim transparency. Let's live that. So this is something the council could request. Then the future, all, all budgets, anything over 100 pages goes, you know, 14 days review by the public. With issues on the documents, I saw a $10.8 million deficit for this year. Something's wrong with that. We got a word solid when Laura and I and some others asked about it at the full budget hearing, but I would like an explanation tonight so we know why that deficit and where it's being funded from. Is it being funded out of general funds or some other funds? General funds, remember, I came to council a few years ago, 24 million was depleted from our general funds by things like this. It's not the time or place to drop down the limited general funds reserves that exist. Also, I liked the fact that you took a third of, of the TOTs, but when I proposed this a year ago, you were also, well, my suggestion was to take one-third of increases in property taxes, sales taxes, and parking fees, and get those unfunded liabilities paid down. Once you pay it down, there'll be so much money in this town, you won't know what to do with it. But having that hanging over your head, it's a sort of Damocles, that's extra money. So you haven't budgeted for that. You really don't know what it is. Take the actual, and to the extent you have a surplus, pay down your deficit. I think one of the troublesome things I saw in here was the population decrease of 2,000 that's listed in these financial reports. That's a staggeringly large number in a city the size of 66, down to 64,000, but no explanation of why, where, what demographics, what economics. That's an important thing for the city to know, but yet there's no details on it. Maybe you could find out tonight. And finally, on page 50 of the long report, 2027 to 2028, there's a projected 9.7 million operating loss projected, where the years earlier, they're projecting pro, you know, profits, whatever, surpluses. Why? No explanation. And what are you going to do about it? You've got to start planning now, not then. It'll be too late when out of a 70, 66 million dollar budget, you have a $10 million deficit. So, okay, thank you so much. Good luck and to all the new council members. This is the fun part of the job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I spoke earlier today with, with the city manager, and in regards to the concern about a deficit, could we give the city managers a few moments to explain that in fact, there's not a deficit?
Is that something that you would like to address now, city manager, or is that something that's, that's, that was going to be addressed already by Jake?
We did get a chance, I did get a chance to talk to Jake, and he is going to address it as part of his, but if it's not addressed to your satisfaction, we can answer more. But he did add some information about that.
Okay, let's, let's put a pin in it, and if there's a further explanation needed, we can, we can, we can address it then. But I
And I would only add, most of the questions that were asked were answered by, by our city staff. And maybe the explanation will also make, enlighten the public about some of these concerns.
So if, if, if Mr. Ron could front-load some of those concerns in his presentation and address them?
Yeah, well, let's, let's see how it goes. Again, with, with oral communications, it's often tempting to want to address the issue right away, but that's our time to listen and take it all in. And I think, you know, we have a, we have a planned presentation. Let's see how that goes.
Well, I'll go along with that, but it's perfectly acceptable for a council member to, to ask for a concern to be addressed.
Sure, definitely. And I think what we heard is it's going to be addressed as part of the regular presentation. I would say this, though, and I will ask for support to address the largest, the larger homeless issue. I was already going to do this. I think we need a plan of action because we've had surprisingly cold weather. We don't want people suffering and certainly not dying on our streets, no matter who they are. I think we could, we can have a better plan of action to address what to do with, in times of inclement weather, with a full range of options. So I would ask for, for support to agendize that at our next meeting, hopefully from our homeless subcommittee folks here, so we can get an, an agenda report to, you know, have staff come back with options to ensure that we, we're doing everything we can to prevent suffering and certain, or worse, consequences for the folks that are unsheltered out there in the cold, cold temperatures that we've had lately.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second that. If I could put a friendly amendment on it, that we also look at options of how can the city partner with nonprofit and faith-based organizations? Is that feasible? Is it not feasible? And I, I would also ask that if it needs more time than to look at this, then it's not ready by next, by their next council meeting than perhaps the one after.
Happy to take the minute, but there is some urgency here because we have cold weather coming again. And so I, I think certainly if, if there's not enough time to address everything at the next meeting, that would be okay. But I think the purpose is to see what options we have now, be they, obviously, we don't, you know, sure, we can look at whether there's a, there's a feasible option to do a shelter in town on a very temporary basis, or hotel vouchers, if those are available from the county and things like that. But I'm looking for a, a plan to take immediate action, you know, that we could discuss at the next meeting. Is that fine?
Yes.
Can I get a third on that? No?
Has there been a third?
No.
I'll give it a third for, for discussion purposes.
Okay. All right. Is that sufficient, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just to Mr. James, and we're not going to sidestep your issue. I just want to make sure that we give him a chance to go through, and then we will definitely address your concern.
Okay. All right, on to fiscal year 2022, '23, second
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's not that I'm opposed to that. We've been working on this. Mark and I have been working on this every day. So it's not as if this issue is not being addressed.
Right.
But the committee is working on this.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I have no doubt there. And I don't take it as any kind of opposition. This is an emergency sort of situation, an urgent situation. So I'd just like to see what the city can pull together in that relatively short period of time before our next meeting.
If I were cold and wet, it'd be urgent for me to get a job.
Well, we're not going to get into that discussion right now.
If we're not going to get in that discussion, why have it?
I think we, we, we're on the agenda for next time, and then let's discuss it.
We're not allowed to discuss the item at the meeting today. 2022, '23, second quarter financial update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name's Jake Ron, and I'm the Financial Services Officer for the City of San Clemente. There we go. All right. I'll be presenting the second quarter report and the mid-year overview. The second quarter report is mostly focused on the general fund, and we'll be going into those in a little bit more detail. There is some additional information that is in the report, and also be going through the major mid-year adjustments, again focusing on the general fund and also highlighting some of the other fund changes. Oh, there we go. General fund revenues, the budget to actual for the last two years. Here's a presentation, and this covers the last two years where we were at December 31st. You can see last year, we were at 44% of revenues at this time, and this year, we're at 43%, so in line with expectations at this point. Details on all the individual categories are in the report, but I'm going to go ahead and address the big revenue sources for the general fund, which are property taxes and sales taxes. And I have a slide on that. Also, to address, we have $78 million worth of revenue, and I'll kind of come back to that in just a little while, once we start talking about expenditures. All right, property tax. You can see last year, we were at 16.5 million. This year, we're at 17.6 million. That's about a 7% increase at this time of the year. Again, we're anticipating to hit our property tax numbers for the year. So that should be good. We're right on track with about 43% of revenues. All right, sales taxes. Last year, we were at 4.5 million. This year, we're at 4.4, so a little bit of a leveling there from that perspective. Last year, we were at 39% of the budget. This year, we were at 34% of the budget. But again, I believe we should be able to hit our sales tax numbers for the year. And additional information on sales taxes and all the other revenues are in the report. So the general fund expenditures, the budget to actual for the last two years, there's 47% is where we were at last year. And this year, we were at 45%. And this is kind of going back to the commentator's speaker or the speaker earlier. We had 78 million in worth of revenues, and we have 88 million worth of costs. Some of the costs associated are primarily one-time costs, whether they be carryforwards from the previous year or included in the budget. You may recall, there's about 3, 3 million worth of UAL payments in capital projects, and this is listed in the exhibit, capital projects are 7.7 million. Some of those projects include sand replenishment for 1.9 million, and street and sidewalk projects for 1.1 million. And then there's also other one-time costs of about 2.3 million, which were carried forward from the previous year. And that includes one-time costs such as the Trackett implementation and other one-time studies related to sand and SEQA and other costs associated with one-time studies. There was also a one-time transfer to the Clean Ocean Fund. Again, while we're seeking renewal of the Clean Ocean Fund, this was to supplement the Clean Ocean Fund in the short term while revenues weren't being generated from that aspect. So moving on to the next slide.
Just a moment. Is that, is that what Councilmember James, part of what you were getting at with the, okay, and so the reason that it appears our costs are exceeding is because we had a lot of one-time
One-time costs, the UAL payments, capital projects such as sand replenishment, and the one-time transfer over to the Clean Ocean Fund.
These are funds that have already been appropriated in previous years that are now expended this year, having nothing to do with our general budget. Is that correct?
That's correct. A vast majority of them are previous year. There is a little bit of one-time costs in this year that was incorporated in the budget.
And there's some ARP funds in there as well, right?
Yeah, there is a one-time transfer over, and that was to assist with the Avenue to Victoria sidewalk project, and then also funding some of the public safety-related costs.
And that money came from the federal government?
Yes.
Original. So, okay, thank you for raising that, Councilmember James.
And then let me point one other thing. You can see last year, we were at 37.5, and this year, we're at 39.8. You might go, oh, that's a big increase. Again, we've made the $2 million UAL payment, so that accounts for some of that increase. All right. And on the next slide, it shows the general fund operating position. So this is a little bit more realistic comparison. This is where we tried to exclude the one-time activity. So you can see the adjusted operating revenues are 76 million. The adjusted operating expenditures are 75.6 million for adjusted operating position of about 400,000. And this includes all the mid-years that were adjusted or included in the report as attachment B. And one thing I do want to point out, and we'll get to them on the next slide, but council discussed the travel and training for the city council. Included in that, we were already reviewing. Staff take a look at every line item, and we go through, and we realized there was some more funds needed. So included on that listing is 5,000 for travel and training for city council. So that would change that budget from about 6,000 to about 11,000 and get you guys through the year. All right. Again, on the revenue side, the property taxes, we're recommending increase there. Intergovernmental, there's a one-time grant of 140,000. Rentals, this is mostly from, I'll call it, city facility rentals. And there are other general fund revenue increases of about 182,000. Altogether, the budget adjustments that we're recommending at mid-year are 575,800. On the expenditure slide for the next slide, we have supplies, and that's primarily in chemicals, maintenance, and other. These, I would say, are a little bit inflationary, and where we've been seeing increases from an inflation impact, there's about 88,000 there. Natural gas, again, energy prices have been a little higher, primarily in the gas area. Transfer to other funds, we're recommending a $100,000 transfer to the transit fund to assist in paying for the trolley operations. And other general fund expenditures, another 105,000. Again, a full detailed list is attachment to the report. The increase is about Uh, the increase is about 349,000. Uh, moving on to other fund adjustments, the other side of the 100,000, you got the transfer in. Uh, sale of fixed assets, uh, essentially we sold vehicles, and we recovered 100,000 on the sale of those vehicles. Uh, and other revenue, 70,000. Detail is in the report. Other fund expenditures increased by about 432,000. Again, kind of going to supplies, costs, chemicals, maintenance, and fuel, because that's where fleet operations are, and chemicals, water sewer, uh, dealing with those costs, landfill fees, that's related to sewer. Um, equipment costs, rentals, uh, that's for some, uh, equipment that we needed, and other sewer operating costs, 100,000. And other expenditures, uh, reduction of about 35,000. Again, detail is in the report. So with that, the next slide shows the recommended action, basically receive and file the fiscal year 22, 23, second quarter report, and approve and authorize the mid-year adjustments as listed in attachment B.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One thing that's not in your report is where, where do we stand from a raw number perspective and a funding percentage? You know, we've done, we've been involved in the 3-2-1 for, for, for more than a year now. Are we approaching 90%?
Depending on results, uh, we'll get into that later, but the CalPERS plans are funded at 83% as of this time, but that was prior to any payments under the 3-2-1 plan, and we'll talk about it a little bit more. The actuarial valuation from CalPERS is dated June 30th, 2021. Uh, we started implementing the 3-2-1 plan in October of 2022. So all those payments were made in, or it was Octo, yeah, October 2022. Made payments in 2022 and 2023, or October 2021.
So we don't, we, we don't have the ability to have a running total of where we stand today?
Uh, CalPERS, because they have so many plans, do, they do actuarial valuations on annual basis, and with all their plans, they release those results on a, uh, on annual basis.
So our, our, the next release will be very favorable to us, because that would be, uh, 2021, before all the Biden nonsense ruined the economy. Is that correct?
Uh, well, the results as of 2021 was when the stock market had a good year. There was a 21% return for, uh, CalPERS. The next year in fiscal, or for the 2022 valuation, that was when there was a downturn, a negative 7% return. So it will equalize somewhat, but again, we were making payments on the 3-2-1 plan, and it should approve from a long-term perspective over the next couple of years.
But a year from now, what comes out will be based on the debacle we've had with the, the economy and the stock market, right? And we could expect to see, uh, some negative numbers there. Would that be correct?
Um, again, pension funding is dynamic. There's a whole bunch of things working in, whether it be actuarial assumptions, experience changes, let's say, uh, some of the population because of COVID-19 passed away earlier than expected, uh, those would be experience changes. So there's a lot of factors working into play, and I'd be hesitant to get into, I'll call it, specific funding percentages at this point without their reports.
My last, it's not a question, but, but a comment. Uh, Mr. Malamu brought up the 88 million dollars, and when, when you read it, 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 it appears to be a significant deficit. I agree with him on that. Can we, in the future, can we account for the, the, the funds that are being expended that are not coming from this year's general fund, i.e. ARP money, i.e., um, capital improvements that were, that were funded in previous fiscal years, but we're expending now? Because it, it, it's a fair point. It, it does look like we're overspending.
Um, there's different ways that we can present that information that might be better to, for understanding purposes.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, you know, again, receive and file the 2023, uh, second quarter report and approve the adjustments, and then.
Do you have a motion?
I will, I will move to, uh, receive and file the amendment, and let me find the right language here. I can't find it. And, uh, approve the, the other changes made. Let me find the right language.
Councilmember Cabral.
You stepped into it.
I know I did.
Would you like me to read it for you?
Yes, yeah, read it for me.
Receive, a motion by Councilmember Cabral. Receive and file the fiscal year 2022, 23, second quarter report, and approve and authorize the mid-year budget adjustments listed in attachment B.
Does that move?
Second? Seconds not blocked. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Now, are we on long-term financial?
Yeah, we'll, we'll move on to the long-term financial plan and the core papers. We have a presentation related to that.
Um, are we going to hear the report and then have the speaker? Okay.
Can I speak first, if you don't mind? It usually goes before.
Will you change that? Yeah, we, our practice is to comment after the speaker, because some of your, some of what the speaker says may affect your comments. Okay, well.
All right. So moving on to the 2023 Long-Term Financial Plan. Uh, we'll go through the fund overview, and on the next slide are all the governmental funds. We have the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city, and then we have special revenue funds and capital project funds, which are for specific purposes, and the revenues received in those funds are to be used for specific purposes. So just wanted to give a little bit of an overview for some of the new council members related to that. And then the governmental funds are one-sump fund type. Moving on to the next slide, we have the proprietary funds, and these are more service or user fee, uh, recovered. So we have enterprise funds on the left-hand side, and we have water, sewer, storm drain, clean ocean, solid waste, and golf course. So user fees are charged, and those are used to fund the operations of those, uh, operations. Uh, internal service funds, those are more internal in nature, and they're primarily citizens, or services paid for through all the different funds within the city and operated by city staff. So going on to the next slide, we have the 2023 LTFP financial papers. We have the financial trends analysis, that's looking at the past, the financial forecast, which is looking at the future. We have the reserve analysis, which is kind of where we are right now on, uh, our reserves, and fiscal policy, which sets the tone for the future, related any long-term considerations or initiatives. Uh, the next slide goes through the strategic priorities. I just wanted to list this. Council came up with this last year, and the focus is on financial stability, value in city services and operations, update and maintain infrastructure, staff recruitment and retention, and digital transformation. So as we go through, it's, just to provide a reminder, uh, as we go through, related to what we're trying to achieve through all the priorities of the city. All right, so the trend analysis on the next slide, uh, on the left-hand side, you see where we were. On the left side is more warnings or, uh, things that we should be concerned about. On the right side is favorable, favorable caution, and this kind of shows the information since 1994 to where we are currently. You can see we, this year we have nothing on the left-hand side. We have favorable caution at this point, and I'll go through the favorable caution indicators on the next slide.
Jake, let me ask you a question if I could. The slides that you have, do they relate to the, the handout that was given to us earlier? There, there's no page numbers on there. I'm having a little difficulty.
Uh, not on this page. There are page numbers that will come in on the, the upcoming slides.
Okay, so these don't relate necessarily to the documentation?
Uh, no. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh. Uh, so the financial trends, we tried to break them into five different categories: revenues, expenditures, operating position, debt, unfunded liability, and community. All the indicators are listed on page 18, and that provides a perspective of the last five years as to what the ratings were. So for the night, financial trends, for the revenues, there were nine trend indicators. Five are classified as favorable, four as favorable caution. Uh, the first three, revenues per capita, property tax revenues, permits and business licenses. Generally, those indicators, the revenues did go up from a dollar perspective, but they didn't necessarily keep pace with the high costs or the inflation impacts. Uh, the fourth one, the community development services charges, there was a slight decrease from the previous year, and I listed the pages relating to the LTFP document on each of these. Uh, the community development charges, they went down slightly, but they're in line with historical, uh, expectations, and I would anticipate a slight decrease as Sea Summit came to completion over the last couple of years. Uh, expenditures, there's five trend indicators, three are favorable, two favorable caution. The expenditures per capita, again, we were dealing with higher costs and higher inflation. Fringe benefits on page 36, um, that one, it's primarily related to, uh, a higher percentage of salaries, uh, we spent on fringe benefits. But once you factor out the one-time payments under the 3-2-1 plan, you'll see there's a decrease. This was the first year of the decrease. Uh, financial trends, the operating position, there's three trend indicators, all were favorable at this point. The debt unfunded liability, three trend indicators, all three were favorable. Community, the true, two trend indicators, two favorable caution. Uh, the population, again, there was a 2,000, uh, person decrease in population, and a little bit of that is due to the 2020 census information. So everything kind of gets recast based on the 2020 information in the census. And also a little bit of perspective, in Orange County, just based on 2022 information that we get from the state, uh, five cities in Orange County actually showed an increase. All the rest were a decrease. So just a little bit of context and perspective on that. Uh, property values, we kind of talked about a little bit on the revenue side. Property values, although they did increase, did not increase at the level of inflation. So that kind of covers most of the favorable caution. And on the next slide, uh, this is where I'll get a little bit into some of the changes. Most of the ones where it was changing to favorable caution, I've already just talked about. Uh, elastic revenues, it moved from favorable caution to favorable, and that's primarily due to sales tax and transient occupancy tax. Elastic revenues are typically more impacted from economic factors. Uh, operating position, again, as pandemic restrictions were eased, uh, operating surplus improved, and the unrestricted fund balance improved slightly from the previous year. Um, for the debt unfunded liability, this one, you might be going, okay, uh, it's a little confusing. We have a huge unfunded liability. But on page 43, uh, if you look at it, over the last two years, it's increased from, uh, what was it? The funded status increased from 68% to 76%. So it's essentially some of the actions that we've been doing, taking down, uh, the unfunded liability have been paying off from a funded status component.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So, um, my question is, the, the generally accepted, uh, accounting principle is to have 18%, uh, an equivalent of 18% of your bu, of what is in your budget in your, in your, um, reserves. Is that correct?
Uh, 18% is the GFOA recommended practice for
That was what I was looking for.
The emergency reserve for the general fund.
And we're at what now?
Uh, we're at 20%.
We're at 20%. At the end of this, I, I will make a motion, unless you can explain why I shouldn't, I'm going to make a motion that we take the difference between that 20% and 18% and take that reserve down to, to 20% and either pay off, uh, or, or pay, take down our unfunded liability or pay, put it into a 115 trust. And I think that's a discussion we should have at, at the end of this. So just be prepared for that, okay?
Okay. And we'll be covering a little bit more about the emergency reserve and pension funding as we go through our presentation, just for, uh, informational purposes. Uh, moving on to the reserve analysis, again, this is kind of where we are currently. Uh, the reserve categories, we have emergency reserves, which are basically providing a foundation for the operations of the city. We have the capital infrastructure reserves, which are to maintain, uh, and ensure facilities are properly maintained. We have operational reserves, which allow for a better smoothing of costs over time, so a one-time impact doesn't, uh, hit, uh, as quickly as needed, and it can be smoothed over, over time. Uh, going on the next slide, we have the reserves by fund at June 30th, 2023, and I tried to break them into, I'll call it, three categories. We have the general fund reserves, there's the 15.6 million in the general fund emergency reserve, that's 20% funded, or 20% of the operating expense, uh, being funded. Capital reserve fund, this is where we move money over from the general fund, and that's set aside, uh, that's 9.7 million, and that's used to fund equipment, facilities, park assets, and accrued leave payments when employees leave. Uh, the enterprise fund reserves, again, uh, we have the emergency reserves, the capital reserves, and debt reserve, and all, all this information is on page 63 in the LTFP. The all fund reserves, we have the capital reserves, which sets aside money for fleet replacement, and 5 million is that, and that also kind of acts a little bit almost as the operational reserve, kind of smoothing those costs over time. And we have operational reserves of 6.7 in the general liability and workers' comp. So with the emergency reserves on the next slide, we have, uh, no changes are being recommended to the funding level. Uh, again, Councilmember James just brought up potentially changing that. Uh, it's the 20% of operating expenditures. Enterprises, uh, reserves are at 12% of operating expenditures. And then for the emergency reserves, just to highlight, we are currently underfunded in the emergency reserves in the sewer and storm drain. Uh, the sewer, we are going through a cost of service study, which will be coming back to council in the near future, and, uh, we'll be looking to improve the, the funding of both emergency and capital, which I'll get to on the next slide. But storm drain, similar to that. Uh, right now, we're assessing, uh, various legislative developments that have been occurring to see what impacts or how we can better address the service drain charges over time.
Jake, if we're overfunded overall, but we're unfunded in some reserves, so that means that there are other reserve funds that are overfunded beyond 20%?
Uh, well, uh, we only count up to the 20%. There is some funding above those levels.
Okay.
It's just we only, we, we set our target at the 12%, and whether we are funded at that 12%, and in those two, uh, funds, we are not funded at the 12%.
Okay.
Well, we should probably also point out, Mr. Mayor, that general funds cannot be used in the enterprise funds.
Yeah.
So we couldn't, we couldn't transfer those over.
I was going to ask what the transfer rules are.
We'll have to look at a, a fee study.
Okay. So it's not just one huge pot of money. Um, you have to intentionally fund those enterprise funds, because you're not going to be able to use general fund money to transfer over.
Because enterprise funds are user fee related.
Yeah.
So you try to keep those separate and make sure they're really truly funding their own operations.
Okay.
All right, so moving on to the capital infrastructure reserves, uh, we have the, these are the recommendations that we're making. We're recommending 400,000 from the general fund to the facilities maintenance reserve, a one-time transfer of 300,000 to the park asset reserve. And then for the water fund, uh, we are recommending the transfer from the water operating reserve to the water depreciation reserve of 2 million. Uh, again, we've been working at funding the depreciation reserves and water over time, and as we believe there's enough money to do that transfer, we're, uh, recommending that transfer. And on the bottom, you can see we're underfunded in the water, sewer, and storm drain, which is based on three years of projected capital costs. Uh, the sewer, I kind of already commented on the cost of service coming back, and storm drain, we're paying attention to legislative developments related to those fees. Uh, for the operational reserves, no recommend changes, uh, for those operational reserves. Uh, moving on to the financial forecasts, again, it's best business practice to look at what's, uh, coming in front of you, and what we did is, on this slide, we summarized the fiscal year 2023 budget forecast, so. year 2023 budget forecast. So where we were as part of last year's budget presentation, we were forecasting a .4 million in fiscal year 2023 and .7 million surplus in fiscal year 2024, and we showed a positive operating position in all five forecast years. This year, as part of this year's LTFP, the 2023 LTFP five-year forecast, we're anticipating a 1 million fiscal year 2024 operating surplus, a positive operating position in the first two forecast years and the remaining three years to essentially be flat with the operating surplus or deficit. The revenues are forecast to increase 3.1% on average over the five-year period, and the expenditures are anticipated to increase 3% on average over the forecast period. This is basically a presentation of what's in the forecast. You can see there's the million that I was talking about and how it kind of narrows in the future year, and this is based on table, or on page 48 of the LTFP, and this is before any capital projects and one-time transfers. So this is the, the operating surplus based on those activities. The revenue assumptions, here's the 3.1.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, yes.
Can you go back? I find this disturbing. I didn't see this slide before. I'm concerned about in five years, we're going to have somewhere around a 13% or 14% increase in our expenditures. I'm just making an editorial comment that that is, to me, that's profound. That is, that is stunning. And I question if revenues will actually keep up with expenditures. It's just my editorial comment, but I think that comment needs to be made.
What are the primary drivers there of the increase in expenditures over that time period, Jake?
Okay. We'll go ahead and get into that on, I think, another two slides, but we'll just kind of go through the revenue one, which is the next one. Again, 3% average increase over the forecast period. You can see essentially property tax, again, that's our biggest, our revenue for the general fund, along with sales tax. Those are increased, seen anywhere between 2% to 5%-ish. There is a little bit of a slowdown on property taxes in fiscal year 25 and 26. That's anticipating a little bit of an economic downturn, both from a housing perspective. One thing I do want to point out is, property taxes are kind of lagging. So those assessed valuations are based on, I'll call it, the previous year. So you might think, oh, well, downturns or housing is going slow right now. Well, again, we're kind of lagging one year based on assessor information that comes out. Sales tax, again, 2%. One thing I do want to point out on this is the other revenues, you'll see a decrease in the first year, and that's primarily because in fiscal year 2023, we used some of the American Rescue Plan funds to help pay for some, or that as a revenue source. So that decrease, if you factor that out, it's, it's in the 2% range for increase from the previous year. All right. And then the next slide goes through property taxes. Again, 55% of general fund operating revenues is property tax, 4.73 the first year. And then I talked a little bit about the economic downturn anticipated as part of the assumptions. We anticipate over the five-year period, a 4% average increase. Sales tax, again, 2.6 average increase over the five years, and then other revenues, generally between 2.5 and 3%.
Hey Jake, quick question on this. The 55% of our operating revenues that comes from property tax, is that standard for a city of our size, or maybe even cities in our region? Is the, do you have any comparator there, or are we above or below other cities in our area?
I don't necessarily have a comparison to other cities. Some, some is based on, I'll call it, the makeup of the city. I mean, is it primarily a residential district, or whether they have a big sales tax base like Irvine Auto Mall or Auto Mall driving some of the sales tax. So it differ, it differs by city, and that's one of the things that would need to be considered on any reserve assessments. Because if you're more susceptible to economic changes, let's say there's a big downturn in sales tax, that would translate to needing a potentially higher reserve level to absorb those emergency reserves or those impacts from that economic downturn.
Mr. Mayor, I have a related question. So 55% comes from property tax. What if our property values plummet?
Property taxes are relatively stable over time. There is the Prop 8 recapture, which could occur, but typically, we see that, as I said, as a lagging indicator, and we'll see it before it actually materializes and allow for staff and the city to better adjust to those needs. Again, we also have the 20% emergency reserve, which could be used to help fund operations or maintain operations at certain levels.
If you guys were that good, I wish you would have told me. I sold my house six months ago. Mr. Mayor, so let me just delve a little bit into it. So the past year, we've had higher property values, houses selling at a rapid rate. Now, this past year, we're down, what, 7% starting at the beginning of this year. How is that all adjusted into these figures, or it's not adjusted yet? Because we know property values are falling, and sales are down. Is that impacted? Does that, do those reflect in these numbers, a growing trend of less home sales at a lower price?
Yeah, and that was the reason that we dropped it to 3% based on our property consultant information.
Okay.
Trying to address any of those concerns. Again, property taxes is based up of multiple components. You have the CPI indicator, or the CPI, that it gets adjusted, that's capped at 2%. So there could be a 2% if CPI is above that level. In addition, I'll call it, the housing taxable values can fluctuate. Let's say you bought your house 10 years ago, and it had a value of 300,000. Now, if you turn around and you sell it for 800,000, that property tax value gets adjusted accordingly. So it kind of goes a little bit both ways from that perspective, valuations.
But generally, stable or up, because the assessment, the market goes down, the assessed rate on the, on the existing properties don't, doesn't go down.
Usually go down.
Only for the new homes. And in the last down cycle, so the assessor gallery did, had a policy of not reducing, even though it was an extreme reduction in values. He took the position that we weren't, he wasn't going to drop the value. Ultimately, he dropped a little bit, but then he recaptured it when the economy came back. So ultimately, it wasn't much of a savings.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just trying to account for the fact that we probably had a lot more money the past few years, based on the enormous number of sales at the higher price than we're going to see in the next one, two, three, I don't know how many more years.
Yeah. And I, to address that concern, again, property taxes came in a lot, quite a few times higher than what we initially budgeted for, and some of that funding was used to pay down the unfunded liability and used to address the three-two-one plan.
Thank you.
You know, Mayor and Council, maybe one of the easiest ways to explain it is when you're a property tax city like we are, it gets a little boring. When times are good, we don't get to participate in all the good times, our sales tax doesn't run up. But when times are bad, we're steady. So it's just kind of, we're just, that's a good place to be sometimes. Bars are, our revenue sources are relatively steady compared to some of our neighboring cities.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on to the expenditure assumptions, again, 3% average over the forecast period, and these are the different categories, kind of going to Mayor Duncan's comment, what makes up those increases over time. One thing I do want to point out on this slide is the other charges, supplies, you'll see a big negative that first year. That's primarily in fiscal year 2023, we had the one-time UAL payments. So once that's factored out, the increase was, I believe, actually like around 4.6% from the previous year. You can see salaries and benefits over the five-year period are in the 3% to 4% range. The police contract, again, their MOU is concluding at the, at June 30, 2023. So we tried to go to, I'll call it, a little bit more of a historic perspective of 5% and use that. So that would be one of the main drivers. Fire contract, I believe their MOU negotiations are ongoing also. We're going off previous information with the 2.8 that first year, but let me point that out, that that is capped at the 4.5%. So even if there is an increase, it would still be capped at the 4.5%. Other contract services, initially, it's the 4.9. We kind of used about a 5% CPI indicator that first year, and then gradually over time, we tried to go back down to the Fed target level of the 2% to 3% range. Other charges and supplies, again, kind of in the, initially, we had the 4.6% the first year, and then kind of down to the 2% range. Ongoing maintenance, those are stable projects that are budgeted every year for capital maintenance requirements. And then other expenditures, kind of around 2% over time. So the next slide, again, it kind of covers, I'll call it, some of the main categories. We have salaries and benefits. The city MOU is in place through June 30, 2024. Future retirement costs appear to be stabilizing based on the paydown. Public safety, we have police contract forecast at 5%. Again, it will likely be higher based on more recent information than what we had at the time of the forecast. OCFA, we use 2.8 initially, but again, it's capped at 4.5, and we have the fourth firefighter paramedic cost incorporated into that. Contract costs, I kind of touched on this previously. We started with around 5% for inflation, and then we went to the long-term target for the Fed of 2% to 3% over the five-year period. This slide, it's the projected unassigned fund balance excluding capital projects and one-time transfers. One thing I do want to point out, this does not include the emergency reserve, but it does include a reduction related to contributions being made to the emergency reserve. So the unassigned fund balance, it's going down over time. Again, that kind of reflects the out years with the contributions being made to the emergency reserve and the flat operating position in the future. On the next slide, we have the general fund unassigned reserves, or the assigned reserves. This is the emergency reserve. Again, it's 20% of operating expenditures, and as operating expenditures increase, again, 20% of that number would increase also. So that's a quick perspective of what the emergency reserve would look like at 20%. Here's a picture, and I believe this is what the commenter was speaking to. We have the projected unassigned fund balance, including capital projects and transfers. And the capital projects and transfers aren't listed individually, but in total, on page 50 of the report, and that's based on the prior year's budget. This one, it reflects, the orange line reflects if we were to fund all those capital projects and all those anticipated transfers. Again, capital projects could potentially be delayed or pushed out, or there could be alternative funding sources that could come in to pay for those costs. Also, the blue line reflects what it would look like if we're 1% over on revenues, or, yeah, 1% over on revenues and 1% under on budgeted costs. So that's essentially 1% savings and 1% overage on revenues. So that's what the perspective looks like on fund balance if we factor in those 1% factors. Again, there is no inclusion of capital grants or one-time funding sources in this. So if a one-time capital grant is received for a capital project, or there is a sale of property or other one-time source, that would improve those out years. The next slide relates to a recommendation by City Council made on November 1, 2022. The first three lines are essentially what we showed you before from operating surplus deficit standpoint. If we were to allocate 1/3 of TOT, that would amount to about 1.1 million, and grow to 1.2 million to be utilized for the UAL payment. The revised projected surplus accordingly goes down also. So just a little bit on that TOT potential earmarking. And then items that are excluded from the forecast, again, we haven't incorporated anything from class and comp review. The police contract costs, again, negotiations, we just built in the 5% historical for, based on historical information, that could come in higher. Service changes or, or impacts of new programs or activities. You have economic indicators, inflation potentially remaining higher for a longer period of time would obviously affect the forecast. And we have funding considerations such as the Clean Ocean Renewal. If that's not renewed, additional costs would need to be borne by the general fund. Options to mitigate those uncertainties, again, we have inflation, and we could seek revenue or adjust service fees to help offset some of the increase in costs. Future police contract costs, that would be maintaining the operating position to absorb any increased costs. Class and comp review, again, maintain the positive operating position. Economic downturn, that's where we have the 20% available in the emergency reserves to help maintain operations. And then service changes, seek other revenue sources or adjust service fees accordingly to help pay for some of the costs related to those, or potentially get grants. Moving on to the next, we'll talk briefly about fiscal policy. Fiscal policy is basically talking a long-term perspective, so I worked in the five strategic priorities again, related to the city of San Clemente, based on Council's information. Again, financial stability, value in city services and operations, maintain infrastructure, staff recruitment and retention, and digital transformation. On the next slide, we'll go into all the different categories, and you can see how these relate some, to some of those strategic priorities. They're financial in nature, some deal with capital, and some deal with service impacts and levels. The next slide, again, this is Council's recommendations, or what we're bringing back based on Council's recommended action for that November 1, 2022 meeting. The first action would be to remove the policy which prevents specific earmarking of revenue. The second policy would be addressing the earmarking of the 1/3 of TOT dollars to be utilized for the unfunded pension liability.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Let's talk about the unfunded pension liability just for a moment. Is there an advantage, I know there is, is there an advantage to, on July 1 of every year, paying everything in advance?
Yes. Basically, what we get is a discount on paying. So what they, what CalPERS does is factor in what the return would have been on those investments. Let's say the payment due for the entire year would be 1 million if you were to make it 1/12th every month. Let's say you get a discount down to 900,000 if you pay it in July. What we've been doing based on past direction in the LTFP, I believe it was about three years ago, is we've been taking that early payment discount and utilizing it to pay down the liability even further. So let's say we take that 900,000, then we've been taking the 100,000 and saying, okay, we want to pay down the liability even further, essentially achieving that million and achieving long-term cost savings with that additional 100,000.
I hear you. I'm not sure I follow you. I think that should, every year, I think that should be the direction of Council, not a decision by staff.
Okay.
I don't know whether my fellow Council members agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, the direction has been to use that discounted savings and apply it back towards the principal.
Yeah, based on past LTFP direction.
Okay.
I think every year will differ, and so every year, I think we should, we should have a bite at that apple.
That's probably a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just trying to clarify whether that was past practice or, or direction from the City Council.
It was, direction is part of a past long-term financial plan.
I think it's a good idea, but changing circumstances may warrant a different direction, and we wouldn't be able to know that if it's not brought to us. So yeah, I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you.
This Council recommended policy, Jake, that is something that we, we gave direction on, and we are going, we already made that decision, or that's?
It would be voted on tonight with all the other recommendations coming out of the long-term financial plan.
Okay.
All right. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian for the IT strategic plan, and then I'll cover the pension update and the fleet purchase and lease.
We have a public comment. Do we, the public, let's hear the public comment now, because I think it probably addressed what you just talked about.
Thank you. I think-
I think everything you saw was in the presentation. I don't know why it was given orally because you could save everybody a lot of time. Having said that, it was a nice presentation. But what wasn't there is if you look at the actual financial plan, the yearly plan, it's 360 pages, there's one line on legal fees, one line and one footnote. Tonight, you haven't seen a single item on it. And you notice that's over 2 million, probably 2 and 1/4 or 2 and 1/2 million a year. It's a significant number and yet it's not even mentioned tonight. Why is that? You're going to go in a week or two and you're going to decide if you're going to hire a new law firm or stay with BB&amp;K. That's certainly your decision. But I think you should know that Scott's proposal was for 42,000, maybe 43, 44 a month. The next highest proposal out of the eight proposals was for 20,000 a month. That's a potential savings of $250,000 a year just on that and nothing was said about that? How is that possible? How is that even possible? I would say that, you know, Scott may be a great lawyer, he may be the best city lawyer around, but it doesn't drop off that much from there to the other eight firms. And this city has a fiduciary duty to its citizens not to pay the most expensive rate to law firms. If, the fact that you considered BB&amp;K for one of the three positions that you reviewed is just strikingly wrong to me. It's just wrong on every level. I mean, we had the Rogers Tree service in this town and you rejected what everybody loves and you're now, it's coming back to roost because now you're paying extras. Because as we told you at the time, extras would come in. This firm has been fiscally irresponsible, it's been expensive, the city spent 25,000 to find out they're the most expensive law firm in the compared cities and you're still considering them and it's not discussed tonight? How is that possible? How is that possible? It's striking to me, we have two new members on the council that need to look into this. We have Gene who's a fiscal conservative and I really like what you said tonight on every issue. There is money that needs to be spent. If Donna's going to have money spent, it's got to come from somewhere. So, I mean, and we didn't look at 2 and 1/2 million of expenses? I will also tell you that 42,000, I'm just going to tell you my research so far, the rate that you're paying for that is up to $500 an hour for his services in certain months. In other words, this has been a great deal for BB&amp;K and a horrible deal for the city. And did he come back and tell you he's making 3, 4, $500 an hour every month for his lawyers? No, he didn't. So something is wrong. He has a fiduciary obligation to do it, he can do it tonight, he can address it in the future, but you need to be careful on that retainer and you still need to split those services to save money so the city attorney can oversee it and not violate conflicts of the law. I don't think I got three minutes, but I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, Brian.
We can keep it quick. We've got a soccer game to get to.
I can do that. I can do that. Good evening, Mayor, or good afternoon, I should say, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Brian Brower, Information Technology Manager. I am here to present the annual update to the city's information technology strategic So since 2015, the IT strategic plan has served as the city's roadmap for technology projects and initiatives. The overarching goal of the ITSP is to align city technology resources such as staffing and other funding to align with departmental goals and priorities for the organization as a whole. Each iteration of the plan identifies past, current, and future projects and initiatives. And then annually, we convene our IT steering committee, which comprises, is comprised of various managers, department heads, and subject matter experts in the city. And we go through the plan, we look at new needs, things that arise because of changing business priorities or possibly different financial conditions, technological advances. And then we roll those changes into an update and we bring that update as part of the long-term financial plan, which then feeds the budget process and the IT work plan for the coming Since its inception, the IT strategic plan has identified and completed 53 strategic technology projects. Some recent highlights from this past year include the implementation of the Granicus Legislative Management System. We've completed phase one of this project, which involves internal agenda and report development, development of the agenda packets that you guys receive for your meetings and meeting minute production. In the past year, this past September, we also brought up this facility here, our new council chambers with the audiovisual and other technology needs that are here within this facility. We completed a major data storage upgrade for our SCADA system down at utilities. And we also did a major overhaul on our IT policy and procedure documents that came to council a few months ago. Currently, we have a large number of strategic technology projects that are budgeted and underway. Some are just in their initial planning stages while others are nearly complete. One of those, one big one, being the completion of this facility with the remaining audiovisual equipment and other resources throughout the room. We also recently completed a major software upgrade for our permitting and licensing system. And now that staff is using that system, we're getting ready to roll out the various enhancements to the public-facing side of that, which will include online applications and payments. We also are getting ready to roll out phase two of our Granicus Legislative Management System, which will involve the online portal for the consumption of the packet and also the online broadcast system. So that'll all be integrated and that'll sort of change the way that we broadcast meetings to the public. We also have some business continuity improvements. We're currently going through a procurement to get a new backup system for all of our critical systems. And we're exploring the options to replace our electronic document management system. So some of those current projects that are underway now will certainly bleed into the upcoming fiscal year, but we also will have a number of new projects that we bring forth in the budget process in the coming months for new initiatives or major projects next year and in the following years. The biggest of which is the needed replacement for our Eden Financial Software System. This is something that's been in use for 20 years or more, more than 20 years. It's been a great product, but we have an end-of-life notification from the vendor and we'll be beginning the process to map out the strategy for replacement of this. This is going to be a very complex, multi-year project that we're just going to be initiating next year to determine the best route. We're also going to be hopefully executing on that electronic document management system replacement. We're going to be looking into a new cashiering system as well as a system to automate and manage transient occupancy tax, the folks that, the businesses in town that pay those and then possibly some more efficiency for staff in tracking and auditing those as well. We're also going to have another major data storage update in the coming year. We're going to be replacing the server that synchronizes all of our traffic signals here in town. And then smaller projects, we're going to be rolling out a fully automated way for residential solar permits to get approved and issued. And then a third-party cybersecurity audit as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or there is a staff recommendation?
Question here?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I mean, I find our homepage lacking. I mean, navigating it, I've looked at a number of other cities, you know, and their homepage and its utility, the ease of use. And I just think we need to take a look at how we improve our homepage, how people access information, because I find it very difficult. The other day, I just, I was looking for a document, I put in like four key terms. One of them I know was in the document, could not find anything. So I'm just making that as a recommendation.
And my follow-up comment to that is, let's not put lipstick on a pig. Let's look at revamping the whole, let's look at throwing the baby out with the bathwater and coming up with something new and exciting.
City manager, I know we've talked a little bit about that. That goes to like our larger strategic goal of having a better public interface. Is that, do you have enough direction to look into that? Okay.
I think everybody feels the same.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments. One of our strategic goals for IT is best-in-class, right? I was just wondering, you know, a best practice in the private sector, it may not be a best practice in the public sector, but I think it's something we should look at, and we spoke briefly just before this evening, is looking at the possibility of leasing our IT equipment. And that way, when it becomes out of date or whatever, we're only involved in a lease, we're not involved in a purchase that we're going to be limping along. I don't know if I need my colleagues to second that and give the city manager direction on that, but I think that's something we should look at. Should I make a motion on that?
Well, is that something that we have thus far looked at, Brian, as part of any evaluation on IT that you're aware of?
Leasing, no. No, we've never thoroughly explored that.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion to direct the city manager to?
Investigate.
To invest, only investigate at this point and come back to council on this.
I'd second that.
Do you need a third?
For a staff report?
Yeah, I'll.
Thank you.
Be a third, yeah.
And then with that, I have a question. Where do we stand with E-Trackit? I think that's the most, I'm not sure there's something more important that we're doing right now than working with the E-Trackit.
E-Trackit's ready to go. We, we're going to be rolling out the application types for building in the coming weeks through March. Also, some of the application types for planning, that'll also basically flip the switch for payments for anybody who has outstanding fees to be paid for any type of permit.
And so that will mean submitter of plans online?
Yes, yes. There's already, some applicants are submitting plans online, but this will facilitate that. It'll make it a more efficient process.
Will we get to a point where we will require submission online?
That would be more of a policy decision than a technological decision.
I think, okay, so how about this? Can you see the technology getting to the point where it's just as, it's actually more efficient for everybody to do it online such that it might be, a policy change like that might be warranted? Do you see that in the future here with E-Trackit and other programs like that?
It's possible that our community development director could speak more accurately to this, but I think there's still applicants out there that like to bring in a rolled set of plans or maybe just a sketched-out set of plans that's even less sophisticated than that. I don't know if everybody, I think that taking them in and reviewing them can be done more efficiently electronically. I don't know if the public, I don't know if 100% of the public would appreciate that. And that.
Okay.
It's speculation, but it's my understanding that there's.
I won't belabor the point, but I think we've given food for thought for staff.
You finish.
I got one other thing. The business continuity program, what program is that and is that storage of information off-site?
Yes, yes. Well, it's, it would be local and off-site. It would be local and cloud-based, the system that we're looking at right now.
So if we had a catastrophic event, we would be able to reconstruct all of our data from off-site storage?
Yes.
Would we be able to make payroll and pay bills through that continuity program?
The goal is certainly to be able to support all city functions if there's a disaster on site, absolutely.
But at this point, we're not there.
If, well, at this point, we do not have a resource outside the city that would house the servers that we'd be running those, that would be a restore process to restore data and operating systems to a locally housed system.
Business continuity is something I've looked into a lot and the two most important functions is the ability to still make pay, to have a catastrophic event and still make payroll and still pay your bills. From my perspective, from someone who's studied business continuity on a pretty regular basis, I would say that's vital. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to move back to that issue of the website. I know we had a little bit of discussion about it, but is it clear that some type of report is going to come back to us? I know we're all, seemed to all be in agreement here, but have we, does that have to be motioned and seconded and third?
No, I don't think so because we have, I think, unanimous council support. So we'll expect a report back from the city manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
We've got the fleet lease purchase, oh, discussion, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll go through the annual pension update. I'll cover some of the different plans and some of the past actions taken and where we are from a current funding perspective.
We're going to, are we going to do the fleet lease thing too?
Yeah, that'll be right at the end of this.
That'll be next, okay.
There's about 10 more slides, so hang in with me there. The pensions, again, we have the CalPERS plan and the CSERP plan. The CSERP is the City of San Clemente Employee Retirement Plan. That's our legacy plan. The next slide goes through past pension actions and that included formalizing the fiscal policy and adding summary information to the LTFP in the budget process, approval of the 321, and implementing actions moving towards the 90% funded status and additional contributions to CalPERS of 5.5 million over the last four years and modifying amortization basis to hasten the UAL paydown. There's a table on page 108, which goes through those 5.5 million of additional payments. The CalPERS funded status, again, this is as of June 30th, 2021, 83% funding level. This has the four different plans, basically the lifeguard plan broken into classic and PEPRA, and then the safety inactive plan, which is past police and fire, and the miscellaneous plan, which is general employees.
As long as you have the slide up there, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. The safety inactive plan, the San Clemente Fire Department and Police Department has ceased to exist for now 30 years. Do we know what that number was on, in 1993 when the police and fire inactivated? Has that number grown? Obviously it has. Has that, you know, what is the impact of us ignoring that for 30 years?
Basically, that liability has changed over time as those officers moved up and they may have become a captain or a lieutenant with another agency or even a chief with a different agency. That would change their final year of compensation or final three years, I forget which one that is off the top of my head, for under that pension plan. Also, there's been changes in assumptions and actuarial assumption changes and investment rate of return changes. So all those have an impact on the liability. Again, kind of going to liabilities are dynamic as far as pensions changing on an annual, by annual basis.
And my concern, it's been around for 30 years, it's inactive, and it's the lowest funded account we have.
And that's one, also moving to get it 100% funded over time is probably applicable because as, I'll call it, the population ages out, I'll say that in nice terms, you don't want to have this ongoing pension trust assets held in that pension trust. That way, it would be overfunded and those trust assets would be limited to paying pensions related to those employees.
You know, just so the public knows, I'll give you a scenario and it's very close to a real scenario. In 1993, there was a police officer, he was making 45, $47,000 a year. He had a full career and, you know, he's with us for two or three years. He had a full career and then retired in the Bay Area as a police chief making.
He had a full career and then retired in the Bay Area as a police chief, making a couple hundred thousand a year. We're on the hook for three years at that $200,000 a year, not on his $45,000, $46,000 a year. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, mine too. That's how unfair the system is, that's my point.
And one thing I want to point out on this slide, since it's up, again, this is as of June 30th, 2021, prior to any payments under the 3-2-1 plan. And then a little bit of perspective also, the unfunded amount shows is 22.4 million. That was 33.3 million in the previous year, and the 83% funded status, that was 73% in the previous year.
Good progress.
All right. And then moving on to the next slide, again
Can I move back to that? I just want to make sure I understand it completely. And is, my question to you, is there a generally accepted target reserve number that you're going to trying to reach, understanding that that target is never fixed because it depends on whether someone now lives to 95 instead of 65, like when they originally got their pension, understanding that the interest rates are flexible, and understanding also that, you know, salaries change? Is there like, is 80% a good number? Because you will never pay it down, as I understand, because you never know how long someone's going to live and what salary range they're going to be at.
Our fiscal policy set that target at 90%, but again, it's a target. I would say any pension plan funded above 80%, I believe on industry standards, is considered a well-funded plan.
All right. Have we ever been over 100%? And what happened? Because my recollection is the state has taken some of that money when we've been over 100% or used it for other purposes.
Okay. Not in pension plans, because once those pension plan assets are in, but what can happen is, and this occurred a long time ago, plans were super funded, so essentially you were able to offer benefits or enhance some pension benefits without really there being a cost associated with it. But I believe over the years, things have changed to better address any of those concerns.
So if there's too much money there, the state could say, well, let's pay people more money, essentially.
Essentially, they could offer benefit enhancements, because again, it's in that trust.
Mayor, I have a positive comment here. So you go to the unfunded amount of 22,400, 400,000. Two years ago, that number was 45 million, right?
Yeah, probably around 45 million.
It was 45, it was 40, 45. So we are, you know, although it's something I'm obsessed about, we are making progress there. We've cut that number in half.
And then the next slide goes through where we are on the 3-2-1 funding strategy. Again, we've completed the $3 million payment to the past pension, or the past police and firefighters, the 2 million towards the miscellaneous plan, and then 1 million was going to be set aside in the Section 115 plan. But in October 2022, council authorized the use of these funds to make an additional paydown on one of the pension plans to be determined. Based on staff's recommendation, if we pursue this route, making it to the safety plan would be appropriate. So with that, the recommendation on the next page, based on council's direction, modify the 1 million, Section 115 trust funding, and utilize the 1 million to make a one-time pension payment on the public safety inactive plan.
Do you, okay. Do you want us to make a motion at that point?
We can cover them all at the end, once we're done. Pensions, again, here's the CSERP, the current status, and again, we're going through CalPERS, and we have a strategy for CalPERS. CSERP, we have a little bit of a different strategy. So this one's at 54% funding, 19.6 million, just a little bit of perspective also on this one. We utilize a 5.5% discount rate. If we were to use something more along the lines of CalPERS of 6.5, I believe there's a 6.8 now, that liability would be 15.5 million, and the funding status would be 64%. We're getting there over time. CASA's portion is funded at 73%, and the city's portion is 53%. There are no active participants from the City of San Clemente, so this kind of goes to the inactive plan, the police and firefighter. We want to get there over time, making annual payments to pay down that liability. We don't want to all of a sudden get up to 95% and have a good return year, and then all of a sudden it's an overfunded plan. And then the funding strategy and recommendations, the strategy, again, lower future liabilities, review asset investment mix, and address future administration costs. The recommendations that we're going through, and this is based a little bit on previous year direction, continue the CASA evaluation related to the CalPERS pension administration, and update the city's pension investment policy, and prepare a council agenda report once we get CASA information back from Chandler and Associates. So we'll go on to the next slide, which is the fleet lease purchase. Going on to the next slide, we have the vehicles by department. As you can see, this is just a presentation of the vehicle inventory for the City of San Clemente. We have water, sewer, public works, and police. Altogether, I'll call it, water, sewer, and public works is about 60% of the fleet. Once you add in police, another 6%, that would get it up to 66%. One thing I'm pointing out here is those are, I'll call it, specific uses, or I'll call it, heavy-use vehicles where there might be a bigger drain, or they're customized, or I'll call it, they're a little bit more special in nature than, I'll call it, just a pool vehicle for that. The next slide, the considerations in the report, we just tried to present some of the differences between leasing and purchasing. The first column is leases, second column is purchase. Some of these are just very simple things. Again, lease, no significant one-time capital outlay, requires significant capital outlay on the purchase side, and we just tried to list those out. Those were all in the report that we gave to council. The next slide goes through a comparison of lease and purchase, and just some of the criteria that we use for the comparison. This is just some of the basic information that we use for the comparison in our analysis. And again, about 65% of our vehicles are light and heavy-duty trucks. That's why we kind of picked the Ford F-150 XL. On the next slide, here's a quick table format of the input and the outcome. Basically, the bottom two lines are the annual asset cost and the monthly asset cost. So essentially, it's slightly more expensive to enter into a lease than do the outright purchase. The way I look at that is essentially, you're paying interest through a lease where on the purchase side, we've already got the funds set aside, so we're essentially earning interest on those funds, and we're able to utilize some of those funds as part of the operational or the recovery of those replacement costs. The next slide, it's just kind of in table format. The orange is essentially what would be the annual cost for a lease. The blue would, what we would anticipate in the replacement costs over time. So it's, again, it's not a large, significant change, but there is a slight increase in costs related to leasing. Considerations, again, on the next slide, these are more, I'll call it, things that should be considered as part of the process. Again, the lease, it's a single vehicle, it would be applied, so even though there's a slight change on one vehicle, it would be applied to multiple vehicles, increasing the cost over time. With the lease, there's also variable costs for unknown items like damage, mileage, or other trading costs. If there's also customization, that's kind of one of the reasons I pointed out, the vehicles by department, we're a little bit different than other cities as we have water, sewer, and a variety of other things that some other cities might not have. Again, competitive bidding could potentially result in better lease pricing, and it would involve revisions to the purchasing policy, GASB reporting, and potential staff impacts, putting some of that information together. On the purchase side, I'll skip to the second one. We've had inventory shortages, as I'm sure everybody's known, trying to get some vehicles over time has been a little bit of a challenge, but I believe we're accommodating everyone from that perspective. And then we also have the fleet reserve balance, and I mentioned this in the reserves, it kind of allows us to better smooth costs from an operational standpoint. So with that, on the next slide, no changes are recommended as to how we purchase versus lease at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. One thing I didn't see included, we keep some vehicles for a long time, and they're really ugly ducklings. And there's no, there's no calculating that cost from an image perspective. But what I didn't see in there, unless I miss it, is these vehicles we're keeping eight, nine, 10, 11 years, there's significant maintenance costs associated with those vehicles. Are there not?
We go through an annual review, and we have our fleet contract people look and see whether vehicles are due for replacement, so it's kind of an independent review. They're not really involved in, I'll call it, purchasing the vehicles. We go out for a competitive bid on that.
My point is, was that those maintenance costs for those old, call them legacy vehicles, was that calculated into your formula of your recommendation?
We just use standard information, and if we notice there's an increase in maintenance costs, like we had a situation with the Vectors where there was recurring repairs, and we actually went out and replaced them a little bit sooner than we would have under the replacement program. So we do take a look at it annually to see what those costs are and where we're running into issues.
And I agree that the special-use vehicles are not a good option to lease. I understand that. But I was thinking along the lines of the Ford F-150.
Do you lease your 150?
No. But I would say, I think I saw on the slide that had a life of seven years, something like that, right? So are we normally just cycling through that normal life and not going into nine, 10 years? Or are we waiting until something terrible happens to the
Again, it goes through that annual evaluation process. We would look at it and see if it's really due for replacement at that point.
Did we just replace a van last week that was 15 years old?
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jake.
All right, and that is pretty much the conclusion of the LTFP. So we're to the point where if we want to follow staff recommendations or make individual recommendations, we could go through it paper by paper, or comments, or
The, what's the timeline under our unfunded pension liability reduction of the 3-2-1 plan to get to 90%? How many years for this to get there?
That one, we made payments in fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023, so the actuarial valuations would be received in fiscal year 2025 related to that.
So we get to 90 and within
We should be around the 90% again, but pension liabilities are dynamic.
Within four years?
Yeah, I believe we should be close to the 90%. Again, it could fluctuate based on investment returns and
Mayor James mentioned that he, excuse me, Councilmember James mentioned he was going to be asking for the reduction from 20% reserve to 18, taking that 2% and applying it. What would that impact do? If I can steal your question.
No, absolutely, I was going to that.
That impact could potentially shorten it. And again, I'm going to kind of go back to that managing uncertainty slide. One consideration is if you start adjusting the emergency reserve at this point, if we were to experience an economic downturn, that could be an impact from that. But again, it would be also potential cost savings on the unfunded liability. You could make the payment, and it just depend on investment returns and how they do. You really don't, I'll call it, know what that additional
What would your best estimate be in terms of getting us to our goal? With that 2%? And a couple of other suggestions were made during the comments about the payment, early payment in July, pay in advance. And I was also, wanted to bring up the, in order to accelerate the paydown of the unfunded liability, suggesting we do more in the area of the TOT tax, sales or real property taxes to get there. So I don't overshoot the target, but I'm going to get there as soon as possible. What are your, what are your crystal ball thoughts on what we can do to accelerate it to get there sooner without overshooting the mark?
My crystal ball thoughts are, let's see where the 3-2-1 plan gets us, and then if we need to come back with another plan, once the 3-2 plan is concluded and we can see where that is, we can come back with another plan.
My thinking on that is, I'm not, I don't like the idea of waiting to the 3-2-1 plan to see how it goes in years to come. I think we need to accelerate, we can always pull the horses back if we need to.
I'm going to have a motion to take the reserve from 20% down to the 18% that is an acceptable standard and apply it to our unfunded liability. And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Is there one particular pot of money that you're going to direct that to or that you're suggesting?
The unfunded liability. Okay. Well, I would say, I think I'm going to defer to Jake's expertise here. We, the purpose of the reserves is to manage uncertainty. While I do see the benefits of the early paydown, I think it's more important that we have adequate reserves for the uncertain future that might be out there and aren't left scrambling. So I'm not going to be able to support the motion. Anybody else? Okay, let's start the vote then. Councilmember Enmire?
No.
Mayor for Tim, no block.
Yes.
I'm a no.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. Right, this isn't one where we need a super majority or anything like that. It's fiscal policy. Okay. Do we need you to report back on any details or for clarification on that?
What we'll do is we'll bring that back with the budget, and then that we would change the fiscal policy from the 20% to the 18% with budget adoption, and make the according change and figure out what that difference is and make the payment accordingly.
Okay.
And your best estimate on how we're hitting the mark on reducing, getting to 90%?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need a motion on what we have here? Quick question of clarification, the number two on CSERP recommendation is to update San Clemente pension investment policy. That's just a standard update?
Yeah, we'll be bringing back an update that we work with on Chandler, so it'll be through an agenda report process.
Okay. Any motion on the recommendations here on the LTFP?
Before we get to that, I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. One of the things I mentioned during the year was for our risk management department to do a risk financing, basically exercise and see if our self-insured, you know, most of our claims are paid to the first dollar. Consequently, our insurance rates would be higher if we looked at self-insured retention on some of the things, and for that matter, is JPIA our best bet? Did that, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this to you today. Did that, did that exercise ever occur? I see Hannah back there.
I'm going to wear, I would have to check.
And I'll try to comment, and Hannah can add anything if I miss it. We're going through an assessment right now, or going through a scope of work with a consultant to best identify what appropriate self-insured retention level is
Oh, so it's
Based on the information. It's happening, and we'll bring something back to council once we get a little bit more information and we have a report to share.
I'm happy with that response, very happy with that response. Then, you know, the other thing I mentioned during the year that we said we would talk about at this time is the possibility of looking at either Santa Margarita Water District or South Coast Water District annexing our Utilities Department. Did we go through any type of review of that? And what that would take?
I'll let Dave take that one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dave Rebenstorf, Utilities Director. That's in process. Staff has pooled information together and is planning to work with the city manager and city attorney to prepare some sort of white paper for and city attorney to prepare some sort of white paper for the city council to consider. There are certain things that we don't necessarily want out as public information, we want the council to be able to consider as part of that process. So that's why the thought was to go through the city attorney's office with the white paper.
But it?
It's in process.
It's in process.
Yes.
That's all, that's all I need to know. And for, for the benefit of the public, when San Juan did the, when San Juan Capistrano did this, this was a five-year process, so this, this would not happen overnight.
I don't think we have any public here, other than law clerk, I think it's all staff. But we have people at home. Yeah, it's a long process.
Eight or nine of them.
Okay. Any, any other discussion before we get to the recommendations?
Mayor, I just have one, there was a lot of discussion tonight about the best way to approach our unfunded liability, accrued liability. And I, I would seek some direction. If we can come back to you with a plan for that, I, I have some ideas that I want to share with staff and I don't, again, I want to be able to, to look at those and provide some information to the city council, not to go against any of the decisions you made tonight, but I think that there might be some options that we're not considering and I'd like to at least be able to present those to the council. So if I could get some direction to do that, I would appreciate it. Is that the 115 trust, is that part of? Yeah, I, I think, I think there might be, again, there's a couple of different ways to look at our, our money management when it comes to pensions. You know, we can keep it in Chandler or Leith and we can draw a very low interest rate or we can pay down the unfunded liability. Well, CALPERS charges us the discount rate for the money that we hadn't paid. So for instance, if we owe $22 million, they're going to charge us interest on that $22 million because they say they could invest it if we were fully funded, correct? But if a 115 trust is paying us at 8% or 9%, which it would have done over the last few years, and the discount rate is along the lines of 6.5%, then we may be wanting to invest in a 115 trust because we would be about a percent and a half ahead. So I just want to make sure that we're giving ourselves the ultimate flexibility to use our money the wisest way possible, rather than make a firm decision to prepay the UAL. If there's a way to actually use our money that would grow it at a faster rate than paying down the UAL, it's something we should at least look at.
Okay, so city manager, on that first point on CALPERS then, you would say, you would ask us to hold off perhaps and have further discussion on whether to make that million-dollar payment or do the 115 plan as we had originally?
I'd like to at least explore, you know, after a week and a half, I, I can tell you that I do believe that there are some options that we're not, that we haven't fully vetted and I want to make sure we do that before we give you a final decision. I don't think we need to hold off on, on, on the, the payment, but I, I would like to see that additional analysis. And I'd like to see the money we would put into that 115 trust with the cost of getting there, which is pretty high in terms of bond expertise and legal fees, compared to a pay down, to see if we could do a sort of a side-by-side. But I'd love to see that analysis. I'm pretty comfortable it's going to be a mixture of both. I really do believe.
But I, I feel very strongly about paying upfront on July the 1st.
I think that we're doing no matter what. It's about whether we pay that extra discounted amount back that we're asking to bring back. Okay. All right, any, any other?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we need to move and, and give you the recommendations and give you some direction on that?
Yeah, if we could get direction on the staff recommendations. Again, we could just go through item by item. Trends, we didn't have any recommendations. Forecast, there was no recommendations. Reserves, we had the three recommendations, the 400,000, the 300,000 and the 2 million. So if, if directed, staff can move forward on those ones in next year's budget process.
Okay. Any motions on those recommendations?
I'll move that we transfer the amount of 400,000 from general fund. Do I need to read?
No, you just need to, to, to say?
Yes.
You approve the recommendations?
I approve the recommendations.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. You have a second.
Okay. Enmeyer is, is moving. James is the second. All in favor? Aye? Any, any opposed? Doesn't look like it. Okay.
So I have a motion to adjourn the next regular council meeting scheduled to take place on March 7th, 2023. Close session will begin at 5:00?
We're not done with staff recommendations.
We still have a couple other fiscal policies.
Yeah, fiscal policy, do we want to modify the fiscal?
All right.
Oh. I'm sorry, I'm going to get you through this.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that was my fault too, I thought we were, okay.
Yeah, no, no, we have a couple more.
So, okay, so we're going item by item. Okay, fiscal policy.
Yeah. Fiscal policy, do we want to modify to earmark the TOT for pension pay down?
Yes.
Okay, and any motions on that?
So yeah, I, I'd make a motion that we allocate one-third of total, haven't we already done this though? Have we already given direction on that allocation?
Absolutely. That was instruction by a majority vote of the council.
I believe the recommendation was to bring it back with the LTFP.
Okay, then, then I'll make another motion, allocate one-third of the total transportation occupancy tax dollars toward the unfunded pension liability.
Second.
Okay, motion is James, second is no block. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm a no.
No.
Okay. Passes three to two.
And then the next one is the IT.
With Duncan and Enmeyer, no's. Okay.
The IT strategic plan update, basically move forward with those recommendations.
I'll, I'll move to approve the IT strategic plan update.
Second.
Okay. That's Cabral and no block. All in favor? Aye. Okay, the fleet, we have the no recommendation on any changes there.
I, I would have a friendly amendment to that and that is, that that's evaluated on an annual basis.
Is it not right now?
No.
I think this was on there at council request, yeah, so. Well, okay, any second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Understand the logic behind there, but I think it's pretty definitive and so I'm not going to be supporting the motion myself, but any other discussion? Okay. Enmeyer?
So are we voting on, on the amendment or are we voting on the?
We're voting on the amendment first to, well, we're voting on the, there's only one motion, yeah. The motion is to?
Review on an annual basis.
To review on an annual basis.
No.
Okay.
Aye.
I'm a no.
Aye.
Okay. Three to two, that we're going to review on an annual basis. Okay, does anybody have a motion to accept the staff recommendation for?
Mayor, could you announce the two no's, then we know.
The no's are Enmeyer and Duncan.
Thank you.
Any motion to accept the, the staff recommendation here to not make any changes?
I'll, I'll move, so moved.
Okay, and I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me, I apologize, I need to understand the motion.
He, well, we currently purchased our vehicles, we, he looked at leasing.
Oh, we're talking about that motion.
Yeah, he said, he said he doesn't recommend any changes right now.
All right.
But we are going to, based on the other motion, review it next year.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, it's unanimous to accept the staff recommendation there on the fleet. And then the pension update?
And I'm sorry, that was Enmeyer Duncan?
Enmeyer Duncan on the motion, yeah, yeah. Okay, the pension update, does anybody have any, any motion or any changes to the, the We, we already gave direction to not do the 115 trust as originally planned and have the million dollars go to the one-down public safety pension pay, pay down. So we're, we're kind of affirming that here. And then the others, sort of procedural. Anyone have a motion to accept that pension update?
I'm going, I'm going to do a, the easy part and go with the CSERP. So my motion is continue with the CASA evaluation related to CALPERS pension administration and to update the city of San Clemente pension investment policy, number 202-2, and prepare a city council agenda report when Chandler asset management cost information is received.
Okay. All right, so just on the CSERP, we have a motion? Any second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is James, second is Cabral. All in favor? Aye. It is unanimous. Any motion on the CALPERS?
On, on the CALPERS, is there a way to delay this until we have a report from our city manager to delay the, the vote on it?
Do we need that direction today, Jake, on, on this or is that something we can delay and have a separate?
I would say if there's no direction, we wouldn't pursue the 1 million until we get further direction.
It'll only delay implementation of this action.
Correct.
Basically. But you could do the action later.
Yes.
Okay.
The, the money is budgeted and it's ready to do as soon as?
So we, we could still have that money invested on July 1st if, if we come back after hearing from city manager.
That?
That's, that, yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify, yeah, to, to establish a 115 trust is going to take some time. If the council wants to move forward with the 3-2-1 plan, I would suggest that we go ahead and do that, this million dollars and move that, because I would guess it's six to eight months to set up a 115 trust, it'd be in the next budget year.
Okay.
Does that mean we, we've already, we've already recommended that we take that million on a pay down? That's not changes, that, that doesn't?
That's where I'm?
That's what they're looking for.
There, we have given that direction, but I think similarly, we gave it back, we gave it to bring it back at the LTFP and give, give confirmation of that, so we're?
We voted earlier this evening to go ahead and, and do that, right?
No, we voted earlier to do the TOT.
City clerk.
We haven't voted, I don't believe, on this specific direction.
My inclination is not to hold off on that, to go ahead and make the payment. We can always, we can always pull back the horses, but we, I, I just think we need to move, we're not delaying. I think the council gave instruction four, three, four months ago to do this and I'm surprised it hasn't been done.
Is that a motion to?
And that we're asking.
Motion to go with the recommendation there?
Yes.
To, to?
Well, I, I'll look, I'll look at the language, but I?
It's, it's instead of doing the 1 million, the 1 million and the 3-2-1 was always going to be a 115 plan, then there was council direction to have it be an immediate pay down.
Correct. That's what I, that's, that's my motion.
Okay. Any second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is no block, second is James. Any discussion? I, 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 I think we probably should, should have stick with the 3-2-1 plan, but there's not a, you know, not a big difference here and council's given direction on this, so I could probably support it here with the city manager coming back with further information later for future discussion. Any, any other comments?
No, that's, I would just say, you know, I, for me, ideally, we should have stuck with the, the 115 plan back in October, that was before I was on council. But that is the direction of the majority of the council, so we'll, we'll go with that.
Okay. Sounds like it's, it's unanimous, but for the record, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? There is no opposition, so it's unanimous.
Now, the next, I have a motion, the next regular council meeting scheduled to take place on March 7th, 2023. Close session will begin at 5:00 PM and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
Second.
Motion is James, second is, is, no discussion is allowed. Second is no block. We're, we're still time for the second, second half of the, go Tritons.